The line.
Okay, you can open the line now. However, all the callers will still be on hold. You can open the line now.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Ben?
We need a drink.
Dr. A.
One second, please.
He, 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 he put on.
Yeah, I, I, I muted him. Just one moment, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a new operator, so. Little bit of growing pains there.
Good DJ.
So we have everyone here in a quorum. We just need Mr. Moore to come back to do the roll call when needed, when you call for it, Madam Chair.
Okay, um.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. As Chair of the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees, I will call to order this special meeting of the board. Because we received opening and closing comments from board members, the CEO and the General Counsel during our agenda review workshop earlier this morning. Please note that I will not call for additional comments during this special meeting. With that stated, let us proceed with the roll call. Mr. Moore, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Linda Ryder.
Here.
Ms. Erin Huntley.
Here.
Mr. Robert Conerens.
Here.
Mr. Ed Poswoli.
Here.
Dr. John Watret. Uh, Dr. Watret is here?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you. Okay.
We missed it the first time. We heard you now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Arsa and Ms. Radcliffe are absent.
Thank you. Next, the board will receive public comment. Before we begin, I would ask speakers to observe the following ground rules pursuant to the board's bylaws. As set forth in the published notice for this meeting, speakers for the public comment portion of this meeting must be connected with the operator no later than the published start time of this meeting. Public comments should be pertinent to board agenda items. Each speaker is limited to a two-minute comment period and cannot yield time to another speaker. If the speaker runs out of time, they are free to submit the remainder of their comments in writing. Speakers must state their first and last name for the record before delivering their comments. Please refrain from comments or behavior that will cause a disruption to the orderly conduct of this meeting. Speakers may ask questions, but please know that board members and FLVS officials are not required to respond. Rather, it is their prerogative to respond. Further, any such responses will be delivered after the public comment period. Any speaker who does not comply with these ground rules may be subject to a warning and potential removal from the meeting. Finally, speakers should note that this meeting, including the public comment period, is being recorded. Thank you. Operator, are there any members of the public who have called in and wish to speak to the board?
There are no callers.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the public comment period. The board will now proceed with its discussion agenda item at section three of our agenda. Dr. Dagada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the board will recall during its September 30 meeting that the board considered alternative methods for recruiting and appointing a successor CEO. The board ultimately approved the notice of vacancy method, but directed FLVS staff to modify and extend the application window set out in the form that was attached to the September 30 agenda. Uh, the board also directed staff to further develop and modify a timeline contemplated when we last spoke September 30. So the purpose of the current agenda item is for the board to consider and approve uh, the notice of vacancy either as it is or as amended. And to hear about and consider the recruitment timeline that our senior director, Ms. Katerina Alfaro Lopez, presents to the board. So with all that stated, um, this will be like a Roberts Rules 101 refresher. Um, there will need to be, um, if there's any amendment to the notice that's presented to the board, uh, by Katerina, then there must be a, a, a second motion that comes up, and here's how it works. Uh, there must first be a motion to adopt the notice of vacancy, uh, that is presented to you. Once that is seconded, the board can then discuss and should discuss. And if there's going to be any, um, amendment, uh, offered up during that discussion, well, there needs to be what's called a secondary motion. Um, uh, something like, I move to amend the notice of vacancy so that X is Y. Um, that motion to amend will need to be seconded, uh, discussed and voted upon, and then we're going to come back to the original motion, which is, uh, to approve the now amended notice of vacancy. Um, I'm here to, to assist as we go, uh, fur- forward, uh, with that. And I wanted to open the floor to, um, Katerina Alfaro Lopez, again, to walk you through the timeline and present the notice.
Through the chair, uh, Madam Ryder, as Katerina comes off of mute. Uh, again, these, we'd like to hear from you what your thoughts are and everything so that we can do whatever it is the board is asking. So, uh, Katerina's going to go ahead and, and present the item that you all will need to ultimately approve in this meeting, and then also the timeline, which again, we have set up in order to facilitate your time. However, we can call special meetings at any time with the idea of having your position filled by July 1st.
Thank you.
Hey, Katerina, you're on mute, so make sure that that's off before you start.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep. Speak a little more loudly, though.
There you go. Um, as you can see, um, here we have the president and CEO notice of vacancy. Um, if you scrolled a little bit down, Bruce, we didn't necess- we didn't make any too many updates to these, um, jo- notice of vacancy. If you scroll down, um, to the minimum requirements of the position. Scroll a little bit down, Bruce. Um, I just want to highlight that, that one thing that we have updated here on the minimum requirements. We are requiring a master's degree in business management, educational leadership, and public administration. Experience, we are requiring 10 years executive level education administration and/or business management experience. 10 years progressive experience leading and managing others. Experience in strategic planning and policymaking, experience in public speaking, five years experience in Florida public K-12 education system, and experience in a K-12 online environment. Um, other than that, if you scroll down, um, Bruce, to the frequency of travel, we have updated the, um, so that it states that there's, there you go. Frequency, frequency travel is required for meetings, training, and conferences. Locations may vary. Um, and this includes regular trips to the Orlando headquarters, which occasionally, um, require overnight stays. Those are the items that I wanted to highlight specific to the notice of vacancy. Um, once, if we receive approval to post, the position will most likely be posted this Friday. Um, I can go over the timeline, Bruce. Um, our goal is for the new president and CEO to begin onboarding on July 1st, 2026. The notice of vacancy will go live on November 14th. It will remain open for 60 days, closing at midnight on January 13th, 2026. By February 2nd, Human Resources will provide a list of minimally qualified applicants. The board will review those applicants and select semifinalists by February 10th. Preliminary interviews with HR will take place on March 2nd, followed by board interviews on March 10th during or regular, a regular or a special board meeting. Following the interviews, the board will make a final selection in April 2026 with contract negotiations led by the Office of General Counsel. Um, and, um, other than that, we have listed the job boards that we, um, shared previously that we will be posting. Um, Education Week, um, School Spring, LinkedIn, Indeed, the ladders, GovernmentJobs.com, Orlando Jobs, and the, um, American Association of School Administrators and National School Board Association. I welcome any questions or feedback, um, as we move forward with this important initiative. Thank you.
I have a question, uh, Dr. Algais. Um, how much of the leadership team actually comes into the Orlando office? Every day, or?
Of the leadership team? Well, we have periodic meetings that we have here at the Orlando office that we do have to come to. At least quarterly and often more. We have, uh, IL meetings here with different meetings, the marketing team, whatever team has a meeting here, and often we have to come here to be with them.
But there's no regular, like, you know, people, leadership coming in four days a week into the office, so there's not?
No, no, not right now.
Okay.
So, so for purposes of discussion, I would move to accept, uh, the plan as presented. Um, and so we could put it on the table so we can have a conversation about.
Second.
Okay, so the, the, what is before you with respect to the recruitment timeline? Is that what you're talking about?
No, both the qualifications. I want to talk about the qualifications as well as the timeline, but, but I wanted to put the, put the item on, on the floor so we can have the conversation based upon your following Roberts rules.
Yeah, so he- here, here's what would need to do. We, we would need to, I move to adopt the notice of vacancy.
I just, that, that was my motion.
Oh, I, I thought you said timeline. So I move to adopt the notice of vacancy. That's the motion.
That's the motion.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, so, um, now is there any discussion, David?
Yes, this is a, a wonderful time for discussion.
Okay.
So, this is John Margaret. Um, uh, following up on Rob's, uh, comment about being in the office. I mean, um, I know we went through COVID and everyone was, uh, gone and we can live, uh, anywhere. Um, I, I would, since it, it is a change, you know, when Dr. Algas, you, uh, when you were in there, you had, you came up to, uh, Orlando, uh, to, uh, be at the meetings and everything. You know, given we're, we're going to have a change in, in leadership. Yeah, I personally think that the leader should be in the office in Orlando.
That's what I was going at, too. I, I think that, you know, especially, I, I don't know, you know, a lot of people are coming. I know we're a virtual school, but, you know, leadership and, you know, think there's a lot more camaraderie and everything else when you got everybody, uh, working in the same place, but, you know.
So are you proposing like five days a week actually in, in the office? And who else are you including in that leadership group besides the CEO to be there five days?
But, I mean, I, I didn't realize that no one was there, uh, they'll just come in. I mean, I would say the leadership should be there, uh, in the, in the office. Uh, I assume that there's others in the office every day. So, if, if, they would be good to have the leadership in the office every day.
So do you add that? I'm sorry, I, somebody was talking. Do you want to? Yeah.
I was, I was just bringing, uh, the board's attention to that section. If we can bring the board's attention to that section of the, um, of the document, Bruce.
Wow.
If I may, while he's doing that, um, something has raised her virtual hand several times, too, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Erin, I missed that. Thanks.
Okay, I, I don't want to talk over each other. So if we scroll back up to the top and it says, um, like the location, Florida HQ. What does that mean? Like, does that mean they'll have to be in person? And I think we should clarify and then also make sure that it's matching other openings that we have throughout the organization. So it's very clear what we're looking for here, but I, I fully support, um, in-person as well.
Daddy, you know, how much, you know, I, and I think, Lynda, your question's good. How much of the leadership team? What are we talking about? I mean, that would be Dr. Algais. How many direct reports are, do you have? And where do they live presently?
So the, my direct reports are the chief officers and, um, they all live in Orlando or nearabouts Lake County, et cetera. Um, Dr. Dagada, I think, lives in Jacksonville area, um, St. John's County area. Um, those would be my direct reports. Then we have the senior directors, which they're all over the place, but mainly in the Orlando area.
Yeah. The Orlando area, well, the Orlando headquarters is used frequently by subgroups, okay? I think that's a fair way of saying it. Some of those subgroups are large, others are small. I think that the word that we're using in the physical and environmental conditions part, um, does say frequent. And there, I would consider our use of the headquarters as frequent. This being the CEO. Um, the CEO needs, uh, the ability to, uh, shape things uh, as well, and who knows what type of frequency it would be. Uh, as Dr. Algas says, at a very minimum, uh, we meet as a larger team along with the, the chiefs and, uh, senior directors uh, on a quarterly basis, and then groups of, of those individuals also meet on a regular basis. For instance, my team meets quarterly as well. Um, so there, there should be, I think the frequent tra- travel and the frequent need to be in Orlando uh, fairly covers what I've heard, uh, thus far.
So, since this is the, the CEO position only that we're actually going for, you know, that we're choosing right now, I, I would make this much more, uh, a narrow that what we expect from the CEO and kind of let him or her, when they get in, make the decision of who needs to be there, how often, when, you know, leave it up to them. So maybe what we do is we make it narrowly that we expect the CEO to be there four or five days a week, whatever, in the Orlando headquarters and let them do their, make their own decisions. That's kind of what we leave them to do anyway. Um, we don't, you know, don't micromanage, so.
If I may, um, maybe if we added the, the word primary office.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Made that amendment, I, I, I'm the, I'm the motion maker, I would accept that. That's a friendly amendment. Would that satisfy the concern of the group?
Right. Dr. Watret, you brought that up. Does that, would that satisfy, you know, what, what you're actually asking for?
Uh, I mean, I would, I would, uh, go along with that, yes, but I mean, I, I primarily was expecting the CEO to be in the office at, uh, at all times. Um, because that, that sets the tone and everything for it. I know it's different, but it's a new person coming in after Dr. I, I'll guess, and so it, uh, it would be good to have that person in the office. But we'll go along with the consensus of the group.
Yeah.
Ed, could you repeat, uh, your, your motion, what, what that was?
Where it says frequent, I would say the primary office would be in Orlando, and the expectation was that the CEO, uh, be at the primary office frequently.
Could you scroll down, Bruce, to that section?
I think that's better than saying every, because sometimes you give them the opportunity to.
Okay, Mr. Poswoli, could you repeat where and what you?
Oh, I see.
Well, so I would add a sentence that, that, that suggests, that says the following. Uh, right after, uh, the frequency of travel sentence, right? I would say, uh, however, the Orlando office shall be the primary office of the CEO and they should include regular and frequent, um, uh, operations controlled by the CEO at that office.
And I?
Yes, of course.
On this, I mean, have we given her chance that the, the new CEO, um, is in Maryland? Are, are we?
Asking them to move.
We asked them to move. If they're, if we're asked them to move, then I would say that, that they're moving and the, the office is in Orlando. But are, are we saying that they could stay in Maryland and make frequent visits to Orlando office?
I, I would not want that. I agree with you, uh, Dr. Watret.
Yeah, uh, and, and, um, Erin, I'm, I'm reading what you, Erin wrote, however, the Orlando office shall be the primary office of the CEO and will include regular and frequent operations at that office. Very good.
I was just, I was just typing it out so we could see it.
Yeah, but that's, um.
Do we insert that, that there's a residency requirement? I, I, I.
Does that make us pay relocation?
Yeah, we, we, we face a real political problem if our CEO is not a resident of Florida. So I think that's a problem for us, and given the fact that the primary headquarters is in Orlando, you know, I would expect somebody to live in and around Orlando.
There is one place that says that one of the qualifications is, I think, five years or, or, or 10 years, I don't remember, of Florida. Uh, I forgot how it's written. Uh, five years' experience in a Florida public K through 12 education system. I would hope that would mean that, well, people leave, though. So, that wouldn't do anything. Yeah.
Okay, I, I believe that I can help with the motion practice on this. Are there other, uh, points?
Yes, I, I do have two other points. Should the experience that we've laid out, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned. I'm not concerned about the, what we've laid out by way of, of suggestion or requirement. I don't want to, um, have that as an absolute necessity. I want it to be suggested experience and then let the board evaluate. I don't want to have a full screen upfront. Um, and so I do think that we should, that experience that is outlined should be suggested, not, not necessarily required if they're missing one piece. Um, and I think that's something that should be left to discretion of the board. I mean, I mean, assuming that they don't have, assuming that the degree issue, you know, uh, they don't have something that, that's missing by a year or two, um, I wouldn't want to eliminate that.
All right, so that's, that's a matter of just instruction to HR in winnowing out who meets qualifications. What you're saying is with the experience, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, bullet points there. Uh, Katerina would have the instruction that it's okay, they would still meet minimum requirements if they hit five of the six. Does that really thing?
No, I don't want that. I, I think it is, my concern is not necessarily how we administer it internally. My first concern is how the rest of the world and a potential pool of candidates would view it. Somebody who has nine years of experience or eight years of experience say, I, I can't apply because this is what they require. I, I wouldn't want to have that, the marketplace limit based on that.
If I may, uh, Madam Chair, through the board?
Yes, of course.
The chair, um. It, it, again, we'll, we'll do whatever. Our intent was to narrow down what we give to the board as, we, we intend to give you every qualified applicant. Uh, so if those aren't minimum experiences and they're, uh, suggested, then we'll give, we'll have to give them all to you, which is okay. We don't have a problem with that, but I just want to make sure that everyone here understands.
Okay.
So, that would be my, that would be one suggestion, and then the second suggestion I'd have on this, if you can scroll down, uh, Bruce, if you can, can scroll down to the timeframe. I do believe that the timeframe of the, the application period should be extended from January 13th through the end of January.
So, Katerina, does that do anything to the timeline if we switch that?
Um, no, it will just, well, we can close the vacancy January 31st. So technically it will be after 78 days, and the only thing is like one day, um, extra. Instead of providing you the list of candidates on February 2nd, we will provide it to you on February 3rd, so it doesn't mean too much.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
I concur with that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that. Um, David, you, I know you put something in the chat. Do you want me to read it, or do you want to?
Well, I, I just want to make sure that we get through each, uh, amendment and that I, I phrase it correctly.
Okay.
So extending it out until the 30th, did I hear?
31st.
31st. Which is a Saturday. And?
It's a Saturday, David?
Yes.
I think maybe we should do close the business on the 30th.
30th.
Yeah.
Um, can we get back to what Ed was saying with the, um, uh, experience section of the minimum qualifications? I just want to be very clear. Can you repeat that? Uh, I'm sorry, Ed.
So, in my view, all you have to add is on the experience after the, the call-in put suggested.
So in other words, like if, if somebody's got nine years of progressive experience leading, managing others, you want them to still be able to apply, right? You don't, okay, I got you. Okay, I'm good with that, yeah. Don't let it.
So, if, if it's a suggestion, um, the way that this will operate is there's one minimum qualification. That is a master's degree in business management, education leadership, and public administration. That, uh, in real life will, uh, probably dramatically expand the pool of minimally qualified people. Um, that is what, what will result.
That is the intent.
That's the intent of that amendment.
Correct.
So, um, here's what we ought to do.
Here's a, here's a question, David. Let me just ask, let me just go a step further.
Yeah.
Not that I'm going to apply, but either you or I, David, as a JD, we're not eligible here to apply, right?
Well, I would think my PhD in education administration might.
I think yours would. I don't have, I don't have one. I'm not, I'm not as, as, as smart as you, so that.
Ah, right.
But, but in all fairness, you know, all kidding aside, I, the question, the question I have, I'm trying to open this up so we get as many applications as possible within the application period, and then allow for staff to work with the board members to whittle the list down. I would rather have 20 applications rather than 10, and because I, I think that provides for openness of the process, and I feel much more comfortable about a process around it.
Okay, are there any other suggestions?
Yeah, I, um, I mean, I'm comfortable with, uh, with the suggestion to have it as recommended or, or, um, whatever the word was. Uh, however, I, I wouldn't want to deviate far from some of those experiences.
I guess that's going to leave it up to HR who's getting the applications. We'll have to give them some kind, you'll, they're going to have to get some, uh, minimums and at some point.
Well, I think, and Katerina, you, you know, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but what could happen is you get your re- returns in. You've got the minimum qualification is the ma- is the master's degree at that point. And then, uh, Katerina and her squad could kind of, uh, organize things in such a way that, uh, she can then report to the board, here are eight applicants, uh, here are. Uh, here are, uh, the eight who meet four out of five of these bullets or whatever, something like that.
That, that's okay. I mean, but that's okay, David. I, I, I think that's right, but here's, here's my concern. My concern is this is still a public process, so we want to encourage as many applicants as possible because that protects the process. And then secondarily, remember, when someone is applying for this job, that application and that list of people who've applied become public. And so the concern I have is that is already a chilling effect on getting someone to apply. It's not like a private, uh, 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 employer, someone who applies at, at, you know, my office as an example, uh, you know, when David applied last week, I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't going to make it public.
You just did, you just.
Sorry, oh, sorry. But my point, my, my point is taken that, that is something that when someone applies for a, a, a private setting, that application is kept private. Their current employer doesn't know. Right? And then in this case, because the, the, this is a public process, you then naturally cull the pool down because people don't want to have that application. They're, they're seeking another job be public for whatever reason. Any other?
I just want to encourage applicants is what I want to do. That's a good point. I mean, it, what, what would be a possible solution to, a workaround, I guess, to, you know, get, you know, I mean, we can't call it a confidential search, right?
No.
No.
There's no workaround in that envi- in this environment, uh, Bob, it's not, you know, it's not like you're looking for a CEO for your, for one of your companies that, you know, we could, you could keep it, you know, private and confidential. This is, this is not that. So that's my concern.
So you, I, I'm hearing three different things, okay? So three different amendments and I want to be clear on all of them for this record. So there needs to be a motion to amend the notice uh, to extend the application deadline to January thirty.
Can I accept that as a friendly amendment?
Uh, you, someone can just say, uh, well, can someone call a motion for that?
Motion to amend.
Okay.
Second.
And then all in favor, all opposed?
Of the amendment.
Okay, all in favor of the, the amendment as written now, right?
All in favor of the amendment that will extend, uh, to January thirty, the deadline.
Aye.
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 Okay.
All opposed?
Okay, the next amendment, uh, that I heard was what we've written out in the, um, chat, which we have to read into the record.
Okay.
So, um, Erin, I see that you'd put something there. Is that basically?
Just, right, that's the location. I just in reversed it. Instead of saying you need to travel to the Orlando location all the time, it's saying that's the primary headquarters and travel is required.
All right, so this would be a motion to amend the notice of vacancy such that the Orlando headquarters shall be the primary office of the CEO and will include regular and frequent operations at this office. Frequent travel is required for meetings, trainings and conferences. Locations may vary. Is there a motion to adopt that amendment?
I'll make the motion to adopt that.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Ly- Linda.
Yes.
Yeah, say all in favor and say, take the vote.
I thought I did. All in favor. Okay, officially, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, I forgot. All opposed? Okay, and now I'm there.
Yeah, see, he, she wasn't reading my face at that time.
No, it's hard to see your face when they're.
Okay.
Okay.
Here, I'll make it, I'll make it really easy.
Oh, that's better. Yeah. Okay, we only have to do this one more time with one more.
Third amendment, the third amendment that I heard.
No more, no more, Ed.
The third Ed amendment I heard was the, um, items listed as experience on, uh, page two. Um, I heard the word suggested, that these were suggested. Is that correct, Ed?
Correct. Trying to keep it simple.
So suggested experience. That's the only change. Instead of experience, suggested experience. Is there a motion to amend, to adopt that, um, amendment?
Did, I, I didn't hear any. Did somebody make the motion to adopt that?
I was going to make a comment, but I'll wait for the motions.
I, I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Uh, all, all, um, okay, wait, is there, so wait, is there a second? There was a second, right?
There was a second, now Dr. Watret had a comment.
Right.
So I, I, and I, and just for the record, I do want to say that by adding the, the word is there to increase the potential pool. However, in terms of screening, we do want to have some of those, uh, experiences expected.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I picture that in different piles. Who, who's got, who's got the most than where we're at? That's the way I'm picturing it.
So op- operationally, we could have a checklist for you with each one of those bullets and where we are there with.
We'll have that. Yeah, we'll have that for you under the current timeline, uh, by the March ten Agenda Review Workshop.
Okay.
Yes.
So there was a motion, there was a second, there now needs to be all in favor with respect to the suggestion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So that motion carries.
Okay, now we go back to what was first on the table. That is a motion to adopt the notice of vacancy as amended.
I have a couple more items before we get to that, just real quick. There may be questions, um. On the education, licensure, certification, master's degree and those three categories only. Is that typical for us or do we also put or related field? Like if you had, say you had, if you're a person like me, you have a MS in education, adult education. You know, it wouldn't, it's not educational leadership, but I know there's a lot of people with a master of science in education or, you know, I'm just thinking about that. If, if we're looking to broaden that, um, those are three narrow buckets, which I'm okay with, but just posing that question there, maybe Dr. Watret has any, an idea there.
Yeah, I, I mean, you could put, uh, on related fields and to, uh, to open it up. Which would then give you the educator, your, your, your degree would be included in that. These are just some of the suggested and then other related fields.
So that would be an amendment.
Right.
Okay, so there needs to be, what, I think what I'm hearing is, uh, to change that language under education license or cert- certification to master's degree in miss, in business administration, educational leadership, comma, public administration, comma, or a related field.
Correct.
Should it be a related field or related degree? I don't.
Typically, related field or equivalent experience.
Equivalent experience. I think that's the right, uh, uh, thank you. Equivalent, does that help you?
Or related field or equivalent experience? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, um, with what we just stated.
Related field or equivalent experience?
Yes, please.
I'll second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, so that motion carries too.
Okay, two more tiny other comments. Scrolling up to the top where it says, um, Flor- um, location Florida dash HQ, should it say Orlando in parentheses there? So it's crystal clear. I know it's way down at the bottom, but a, a, you know, a person from the outside coming into this may not know, um, you know, right away that this is Orlando based. That's a HR question.
We can make that update, no problems.
Again, that sounds like amendment, right? David?
Um, that need not, I think we just made the substantive amendment for that. So I would consider that a squibbers or, and, you know, I don't think there needs to be a motion for that.
I agree.
Perfect. And then my only other little comment is because we are basing this in Orlando now and that's, um, a change from previous, does, do we have to consider moving expenses?
Not yet.
Look, that's something that the board can consider at its discretion. I would suggest that maybe you can include that in conversation once you get the returns.
Yeah.
Great.
Definitely.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Now there needs to be a motion on the main, um, uh, there needs to be a vote on the main motion.
I don't have to say all the amendments we just did.
You do not.
Okay.
So the motion would be, uh, do I have a motion?
To adopt the recommended.
The notice of re- uh, the notice of vacancy as amended.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, motion carries, so we're done?
Um, would, do we not post a, uh, a range of salary with this?
We do not.
Okay, when does, uh, that conversation happen? I, I get to Ed's point, you know, if someone's making, you know, a lot more and they might see the range not apply, I just was curious, uh, we generally post, uh, a, a range in our stuff. Is there a reason we don't post, uh, the range?
Typical, we have not recruited specifically for this position in the past, but, um, we, we don't because of the level of the contracts, the negotiation that will happen with the general counsel. But when we have, when we screen the applicants and when we have the phone interviews, we would probably, um, we talk to them about the range and if, and, and their salary and what they're comfortable with when we have that conversation.
Caterina, would it be wise to put competitive salary?
Yes, absolutely.
Right, maybe that's the way to get to it, Rob.
Okay, I'm good. Dr. Watret, uh, what, what have you done in the past? What do you?
We typically, like I said, we haven't recruited for this position in the past, but we either, um, put it as part of the job title, um, and hot, on the job vacancy when the candidate supply.
So maybe if you add a competitive salary and benefits, just leave it at that.
Yeah.
Would that address it, Rob?
Somewhat. I was just curious with Dr. Watret is, has his experience in.
We, we don't, uh, post, uh, salary ranges. That, that comes in when the discussion with, uh, HR during the screening. We, we do, we always do say that you were competitive salaries. I mean, that's, that's the wording we put in there.
Right.
So adding competitive salary to the, uh, notice of vacancy, I consider squibbers minor, uh, edit. The.
It's already there. You scroll down in the notice of vacancy.
I saw something about benefits down there.
You can see your competitive, competitive benefits package and there's a link to it.
I think we had our hands up earlier.
Yes, um, if you do a quick Google search, which may, I may or may not have done, you can find this public information. So a savvy applicant would be able to find
Yeah.
current, um, you know, what we're paying people.
Yeah.
And by the time, um, the March, uh, ten, or I'm sorry, the February ten meeting comes around, you know, Caterina and her crew would have already had, uh, obtained information on that that you will have, uh, presented to you at the February ten meeting. With that, um, Madam Chair, I think that wraps up the business.
Okay.
And we can go to adjournments.
Okay, okay. Thank you, board members. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This concludes a special meeting of the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees. I want to thank everyone once again for a job well done. I look forward to seeing everyone at a regular quarterly board meeting on December second, twenty twenty-five. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.